This time I'll call the county council meeting to order and recognize the Honorable Joel Hamilton from District 7, who will lead us in pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Dear Lord, thank you for gathering us here this evening as we discuss and conduct the business of our blessed county. We pray for wisdom and your guidance in considering the many items before us. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any oath of office tonight, and we move now to our appearances. One of the things that's, one of the most exciting things for our council to do is to recognize some of the great things that are happening in our school districts, and we, it seems like we've had one almost every meeting. And tonight, we have Fort Mill with us to celebrate not one, but two victories. We have the Fort Mill Yellow Jackets baseball team, the 5A team, head coach Travis Collier, and their team had, and we had assistant coaches Mike Morris, John Turner, Joel Riley, Mr. Sumner, and Steve Plane. They had a great season this year, 25 wins, nine losses, and they were the upper state title winners. Big victory for them. We also have the Fort Mill Yellow Jackets softball team, 5A, head coach Chuck Stegall is here with us. I think assistant Will Jameson couldn't be here. Overall, 19 wins, six losses, and state champions, really big victories. We're very excited for the team, and I understand that there's a lot of travel ball that has to happen, so the players couldn't be here, but I think that there's a video that the PO put together.
Got her by step. And Fort Mill wins the 5A state championship. Valiant effort by the Wildcats, but Fort Mill earned it, and the Wildcats come up just short. Great season for Lexington, obviously a great season for Fort Mill as well.
Well, congratulations to both of, both of you, both your teams. I was, I'm sorry. I thought they were all waving in together.
Those guys right there are something special. That's a special group. They believe, they believe, we believe in them. This fan base believes in them. It's not about me, it's about them. It's about all those students and those assistant coaches, and our administrator and our A.D. and everybody that supports us. It's all about them.
Now we can congratulate you both. Thank you. I was telling, I was telling the coaches that you certainly have the right to and can come up and speak and say a few words if you'd like to. I understand that the students, that the players weren't able to be here tonight, but if you want to say something, you're more than welcome to come forward. If not, if you gentlemen don't mind, let's go ahead and get a picture and let's, of recognizing you. If you could stand right in front here, and we'll get council to scoot together. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We move now to the public forum session. This is where we allow folks to come forward and speak, and we listen, and we don't speak back, we just take in public input. When you come forward, if you please give your name and give your address, and then if you would kindly watch the screen, when the two minutes is up, it'll start blinking, and that means your time is up. We have a few folks here tonight. Cindy Helms.
My name is Cindy Helms. I'm at, live at 2276 Williford Road in Rock Hill. I'm here tonight about the proposed resolution concerning term limits. I would ask you that you vote no to this resolution. Local government, both city and county, is the primary step where we, the people, get a voice in who represents and speaks for us. This level is not influenced by huge lobbyist groups and big money like the federal and state levels are. It is a place where everyday people can be elected. Kerwood Chapel served our county and my district for 22 years because the people had confidence that he was standing for them and would speak on their behalf. People trusted him and continued to elect him even when others did everything they could to get rid of him. Now, I understand this puts you in a hard place. If you vote against this resolution, you appear to be looking out for yourself, and your opponents will probably use it against you. But if you vote in favor of it, you will weaken our county by arbitrarily removing experienced people that have an understanding of how things work and that can consec, can successfully lead our county into the future. You also do nothing to place term limits where it's needed most at the federal level. Most importantly, you will be limiting the choice of we, the people, and you should not do this. We should be allowed to vote for the person that we choose and not the people that you have limited us to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helms. Scott Webb.
Scott Webb, 5877 Fletcher Court in Allison Acres subdivision. I'm talking about the zoning, rezoning, 2212, I believe it is. Just a little late to the party, so I'm not exactly sure what the public consensus is or exactly what this entails, but I have been doing a little bit of research on our zoning laws as they stand. I've been at my address for one year, but that's, that house was built at my family's behalf in 83, so I've been part of this neighborhood for quite a while. I've never known about the zoning restrictions as far as the right to farm. We don't have that in our current residential zoning. It says no orchards, no livestock. Not exactly sure of the definitions of such. We've had goats and chickens and everything for a while back in my childhood. I never knew that was against the zoning. So then, my neighbor Jeff is looking to rezone so he can keep his livestock, which are more pets to him. I believe that we could come to an accommodation even without that with the, the right to certain limitations, just so that, I don't believe he's going to have a processing plant or anything there. So, again, I'm not sure if I'm overstepping or whatever with my neighbor's thoughts on the fraud, on the idea, but I just wanted to put that out there that we probably could come to some consensus with a little less limitations with the current residential zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. And one thing I did forget to let folks know is that if, when it comes to a public hearing item, if you want to speak at that point in time as well, you're not limited to your comments. It's just the front part. Jeff Wilburn.
Yes, my name's Jeff Wilburn. Live at 1691 Hansmill Highway, and we're trying to get rezoned for having some birds and two pot-bellied pigs. And basically, it's due to restrictions that nobody around there knew about, as Mr. Webb said. And soon as I get the two little pot-bellied pigs, which are considered mini pigs, they're not even really livestock, then I get calls, I get a complaint on me. So that's why I'm here. Just, I mean, I'm much, I really don't care about getting RUD. I would just like to be able to even get like a permit to even keep what I have. It's like, everybody got involved in this so far, seemed to thinking I'm gonna get cows, goats, and have some big farming process there. That's not what it's about. It's just about two little pigs and some ducks and chickens and just stuff like that. So.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
That concludes our public forum session. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion passes. We move to our first public hearing, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 22-13, tax map number 65400008, to rezone from AGC to RSF40, 2.88 acres in District 1. Mr. Bueno.
Good evening, council members. This request is to go from AGC to RSF40. The current property has a home and a selection of outbuildings on it, as you can see in the aerial photo here. It is a non-conforming lot in terms of size. AGC requires a minimum acreage of five acres, and this one is 2.88. So the applicant is seeking to subdivide the property after it is rezoned, remove all of those buildings, and construct two new, single-family detached homes. So staff recommends approval of this request. There is not a whole lot of AGC-zoned property in the Fort Mill area, but this is one of them. There is some adjacent residential property already zoned for the RSF40 district, and the comprehensive plan recommends this area as single-family residential, so this request conforms with that as well. And it would also eliminate the acreage non-conformity.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Aldit.
Yeah, well, the only thing, I'm in support of this. I think this is a very good use for what they have here, so again, just want to share that with the group.
Anyone else? All right. We'll move now to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning? If you would, you can come forward. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move close.
Second.
Motion to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to number two, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 22-14, tax map number 78900018, to rezone from RSF40 to RUD1, 5.05 acres in District 6. Mr. Bueno.
Yes, I think you've heard from a couple of folks interested in this application already during the public comments period. So the request is to rezone from RSF40 to RUD1. This rezoning application is the result of an enforcement action. The planning department received a complaint of livestock on the property, and the use that that establishes is animal production and livestock. That's kind of the category that it fits into in the use table. That is not permitted in the RSF40 district. It's meant as a residential district. It's my understanding that these animals are a mixture of pets and rescues. From our code enforcement notes, the hogs that were there, or pigs, whatever they might be, have since been removed, to my understanding, but the last inventory that we have from our code enforcement officers, that there were 34 chickens, 15 roosters, 15 ducks, three turkeys, and one goose on the property, and that obviously exceeds the six chickens that are allowed by code. So the applicant has submitted this rezoning application as an alternative means to removing the animals from the property. Staff recommends denial of this application. You can see on the zoning map on the left there, in that dark yellow color, all of that property is zoned RSF40, so that's the existing established neighborhood that we've heard has been around there for quite some time. The comprehensive plan also calls for this area to be single-family residential, so in order to rezone it to RUD1, we would look for the comp plan to recommend rural residential, but that is not the case here. In addition, because of those factors, staff also sees this application as spot zoning. And for all those same reasons, planning commission also voted to recommend denial.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
How close are the, oh, go ahead. You're good. How close are the, so I'm looking on this, this is five acres. The next to it, are those all single-family developments that are circling this property? Or what is, what's adjacent to that?
Yeah, so as I look at the staff report on the second page in the staff analysis section, in all directions, they are large lot residential, so single-family residential.
Large lot, acre, whatever, it's something, large lots.
Five acres.
Five acres. Okay, thank you.
Any others?
The, the pot-bellied pigs that the gentleman referenced, they have been removed, or can they not be allowed even as a pet, as long as they're going in and out of the home?
So with the, the changes in recode, I believe pot-bellied pigs are not considered livestock in that definition, as long as they're not being farmed. They can be considered pets. That was one of the differences between the old code and the new, but that is about it in terms of the animals that are on the property.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request, if you'll come forward?
Hi, that's my property. It's a small sanctuary. The, the animals are special needs. They're blind, crippled, head trauma, been attacked by predators, don't have feathers, whatnot. We literally have, probably a bird dies every week because they're just living out their final days with us, so that number's not even accurate anymore because we've had so many pass away. We haven't adopted any new birds in the past year, and the, females and females are all separate. There's no babies, there's no breeding, there's nothing like that. There's no, we're vegan, there's no eating anyone, there's no, you know. The pot bellies are small, they're vetted, microchipped, and spayed and neutered. So again, there's no, nothing crazy. They're just little pets, you know, strays. We take everybody. And I just want to let you know that it's just, it's just a little sanctuary and little, of misfits, as you will. And so that number has dwindled quite significantly since that was taken, so.
Thank you, ma'am. You, you said you were the property owner. Can you please state your name, just so that she has a full record?
Bridget Wilburn.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning?
Yes, I just wanted to state too, that we've had these birds, we've had more than this actually, for over four years now. We've never had a problem, nobody's ever said anything. And I was told by the code enforcement that they don't do anything even if they see it unless somebody complains, and then that's when they come after you. So, people have seen these, they drive by my house, they know we have these birds, they know we had all of them. Soon as I got the two pot-bellied pigs, and now I'm told that they're actually allowed to have them because they're pets, which is what we consider them as anyway. So now all these birds, I'm potentially having to get rid of, that everybody knew was there because of a complaint on the pigs. And I just, I'm kind of trying to wrap my head around that a little bit. So, it's not like this is all new. It's been here. The guy that owned the house before us had dog kennels lined up as far as I can see, had hunting dogs all over the place. He got horse farm across the street. Our property is surrounded by woods on all corners except for the road, and our neighbor next door, and he hasn't said a word to me. He's totally fine with everything. I mean, you have 400 foot of woods in between me and every other house, easily. And all my birds are in the back, they're all covered up, you can't even see them. They don't bother anybody, they don't, they don't affect anything in the neighborhood except for this residential rule for some reason. And like Scott Webb said, there's people in that neighborhood that's had goats and stuff in the past, and because nobody's ever complained on them, they never had to deal with it. Now I'm having to spend $800 to do all this, go through all these meetings and everything, just because of a complaint on some pigs that apparently I'm allowed to have. And nobody's ever told me about it. So, that's all I have. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming out. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Scott Webb again. Just to elaborate on what I was saying, and I guess we're, we're all trying to get through, is we have the two choices, the RF40 and the RUD1, or aye. Again, with the, the purpose of the residential is to preserve and to protect the characteristic of existing large lot residential subdivision. With five acres, four acres, I've got four and a third, I fully intend to have a farm. I don't know what that entails legally as far as the code goes. It's not going to be a commercial-grade deal, but I definitely want to have a place to homestead and feed my family. According to these rules, if somebody complains that I have a tractor out there, I can't have it. So I'm kind of following suit and seeing what this is, because I may petition to have mine changed as well, if that's the only option. Perhaps we can look and see if, I don't know what the, the argument against the rural development is, except you got a bunch of yellow, and then you got a couple little swatches of brown in there. And maybe the fear is that it will become a, a commercial farm, and I can understand that. But again, like I stated, we do have the provision in here for reasonable conditions upon the approval. I believe that could be a very adequate solution if, if we can get our heads around that part, because at some point, I, I have an, I have a technical orchard. I have six trees. I plan on putting more fruit trees, plant some more hardwoods, pecans, not for any commercial purposes, but because I want to be able to live off my land to some extent. So I kind of feel if we don't have some sort of meeting of the minds here, we're all going to be stuck in that neighborhood with no options. So I'd like to try to figure out some sort of compromise at least.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this rezoning request? If you'll come forward, state your name.
Bill Van Nordstrand, 1530 Meadowdale Road. I live in that subdivision. I've been there since, I guess my house was the third or fourth house built in there. And when I see this thing, this isn't about these two gentlemen. This is about what happens when they sell their property and the next guy comes in with big hogs. To me, if you want a farm, buy farmland. Don't buy in a residential area and try and convince everybody that you're a sweetheart, and you're not doing anything wrong when you're breaking the rules. The rules were set up just for this, not for some other crazy thing. No farm animals. These people are probably good people, but unfortunately, when they sell, the next guy that moves in there may not be, and he may decide that he wants to bring in other animals. And I got relatives in Iowa, and you can smell a pig farm for about three or four miles away. And I don't live right next to that property, but I know I abide by the rules. I sign the same covenants as everybody else, and I don't think this is about these people. It's about rules and regulations, and it's not farmland, it's residential, and that's what it's designed for, and you don't change it because somebody moves in and decides to raise farm animals and want everybody else to bow down to the changes. That's just my opinion.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? If you'll come forward.
Mike Fidel. I live at 1585 Meadowdale Road. Have been there since, well, been there 37 years. I think, I'm not here to vote yes to say no. I'm here to just simply find out what the heck is going on, because I'm kind of new to, to this. I just found out recently. When we bought our property, the restrictive covenants were very clear. It was to be a residential neighborhood. I have nothing against anybody who wants to have animals on their property. We have six and a half acres, they have five plus. I think, like Bill pointed out, the problem isn't with our current neighbors. The problem is, if you're going to rezone this RUD1, it's RUD1. And RDU1 comes with a host of things you can do. They're not interested in doing those things, but it, excuse me, now it is zoned RUD1. Who is the next owner? Are we going to have to come back and say, well, it was RUD1, but we want it back to RSF40? And I think that's going to be hard to do. So I don't know anything about variances and all the different bells and whistles that go on with county council and the planning commission, but to go from the current zoning to RUD1, I think is a mistake. If there's a way to come up with a variance to allow them to do what they're doing, so be it, but I'm against having it changed to RUD1. Thank you.
Sir. Anyone else who wish, wishes to speak against?
Hey, my name's Chris Matthews. I live at 1430 Farmstead Road. We've lived there for about seven years. We had a house built there. I used to live in a place that had cows, hogs, goats, all kinds of stuff. Love it. I love seeing farmlands, but it's just not, it's just not for a neighborhood, you know. I, I like seeing the value of my property go up. One day we may sell, and I like to get what we can for our property. If people pull into a neighborhood and you've got any kind of pigs or goats or anything like that running around, the, the truth is, it's just not going to look good for a lot of people. Again, I love farms. I used to live on one, but we decided to move to a neighborhood, and so dogs, cats, that kind of stuff's okay, I guess, but that's just my opinion. Just wanted to, nothing against these folks. I don't know them, but, you know, for our neighborhood, I would like to see nothing like that coming in. So, anyway, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak against?
I'm Richard Carpenter. I live at 1680 Meadowdale Road. That's the property just west of the property that's in question. My main concern is, is changing the zoning to, to rural, which allows livestock. I don't mind pets or anything like that, but livestock is wide open, and I think that is the wrong thing to do. We've lived in Allison Acres for 35 years. We bought out there because it was large lots, residential, that's what we wanted. We had been living in cities for quite a while, up north, which you know, they're crowded. But anyway, I think it's the wrong thing to do for Allison Acres to change the zoning, because this is the first property that's asked for it. If you change it once, somebody else comes up and says, well, you did it there, why not me? And that's to allow livestock. Now, again, as somebody else said, if somehow we could come to a compromise or change the rules a little bit to allow pets such as chickens, ducks, pot-bellied pigs, that's something else. I'd be willing to look at that. But as far as changing a zoning to rural one, I'm against. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Do we have a motion to close public hearing? We have a hand up.
Second.
Y'all don't need to wait on me. If you want to get prepared to speak and want to move, please feel free to come forward.
My name's Chuck Green. I live at 1746 Witchfield Drive, fairly close to the property that we're talking about. And I'm having trouble hearing, hadn't heard a lot of stuff, so if I say something that's from repeating, just kind of, but from my understanding, it, it's not, like several other people are saying, I agree, it's not about this guy, this family, this house. We bought, I've been there for 35 years, and the appeal for this neighborhood is an Allison Acres subdivision. It is a single-family subdivision. Each lot has one home, one family on it. It is large lots. Lots run from two to 10 acres, I believe, so most people's four, five, six acre lots, and that's the appeal of it. And it's residential, but you have some property. You have a little room to breathe and enjoy your property and, you know, maybe have a little garden or something, but no livestock or anything like that. And those kind of subdivisions like we live in are getting to be really rare, really hard to find. And because of that, it has to find. And because of that, it has a significant amount of value to it. Not just, I think, to me, but to many people. And of course, our resale value hinges a lot on the fact that it's a large track subdivision for single families. And like another gentleman says, you let one change the zoning, somebody else is going to come along and say, you did it for them, you got to do it for me. And I think most of the people, you've heard from a lot of them, I think most of the people that live in Allison Acres would be opposed to this for same reasons as been mentioned quite a bit. But I personally would hate to see one of our lots within that get rezoned to where maybe these people wouldn't do something, but who knows what's going to happen after that. I don't know what the process is to get it rezoned back again should that happen. But I think it would probably be a lot harder than the original process and maybe not even be able to do it. I don't know. But it, I'm, I'm opposed to it and I think it would, you know, really hurt our subdivision.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion second to close public hearing. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is in my district. So, you know, we've dealt with these situations where you get a complaint on one thing and you end up having...
Brandon, this is to close the public hearing. You want, you can, you can do it either way, however you want to do it.
I'm jumpy. I apologize. Go ahead.
All in favor of closing public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Do we have a new motion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I move to deny the rezoning hearing, but I'd like to discuss it.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Apologize. Got a little jumpy. But, you know, we had this situation with chickens come up earlier this year. And we had to kind of work with, because you have to decide what is best for your neighbors, not just yours. And I'm all for individual property rights. But the problem is, is the rules were there prior. And I would imagine whenever you moved into your home, even chickens weren't allowed at that time. That was something that we've fought for to allow. On five acres of land, you should be able to do things. But as the people who are against it stated, that if you get the rezoning, nothing is to stop anyone from putting a farm there, which can tank their property values. So you have to worry about being a good neighbor, making sure that their property values are protected as well. I would love to bring this up into zoning. I know the, the pot-bellied pigs is just one of the pet instances. But, you know, there's things that we didn't discuss such as ducks. And we limited it to six chickens. We did that. But we're not thinking about too many people with five, six acre lots either, in that amount. So perhaps there's something to where we could look at possibly increasing that number for larger lots. But I, I just, I can't move forward with the rezoning on this, knowing that, you know, it's going to put one spot, you may have someone else in the neighborhood, and it does stink the way that we do things. You know, you've had all this going on. There was no issues, but once someone complains, they have to show up and they have to enforce the code that is written before us. And whenever we're writing that code, we have to think about all the properties involved to make it work.
No, unfortunately, the, the public hearing's closed.
Brandon, you, do you have anything else to add?
No, I'm good. I'm happy to speak with you after we close out, though.
Any other comments? Mr. Winkler?
I've for almost eight years now said that I always prefer that a first reading go through. I always think there's just, there's, I mean, we're hearing the gentleman's hearing now after the code enforcement coming out that he, he could have the pigs, the pot-bellied pigs, and didn't know he could. And he's apparently gotten rid of them, or they're not there, whatever. My thing has always been, we do things in a county council over, you know, it takes three votes and there's a reason for that. It gives us time to find out all the details and to work through things. Probably would still deny it, but I hate denying anything on the first reading. I've consistently said I prefer that first readings go through so that we can get more facts and more details because this is the first time we've heard from any of y'all about any of this. And I would prefer that we have more time to listen to the, the information and, and maybe vote it down or decline it on a second or a third reading. I try as much as I can to support the council member whose district it's in. But I've consistently, at least in my mind, I've been pretty consistent about it. Tried to always get something through a first reading. So tonight, I will not be supporting the motion to deny.
Any other comments? Mr. Roddy?
I'll just say, this definitely, when we get an agenda on Thursday, sometimes maybe on Friday, and we have to show up on Monday to vote for something and actually hear some things for the very first time, it is kind of hard to digest or ultimately pick a side. I do like to get through first reading because I'm just hearing of this situation, just hearing from neighbors, just hearing from the applicant. And sometimes we are able to hash things out as we go through the three readings and come to some kind of compromise. But if we turn it down tonight, there's no compromise to be had. And, you know, I, I would hate just someone to sign up and go through a process, just like the gentleman mentioned. I'm sure there was a, about a $750 fee to go through this process, if I'm correct. And just to squash that right now and not give the applicant and the neighbors a chance to probably, and we always tell that an applicant, work with your neighbors, talk to your neighbors, those who are, who are not so favorable to this particular item. See if you can find that compromise. See if you can have that conversation. If you can't, then ultimately that fate lies within those conversations. But just to turn it down tonight, I, I do think maybe, maybe not, there's some, some wiggle room for something to be had. You know, if, if there's a rescue mission going on with these animals, that may not be allowed. But if someone has a, a service pet, you know, how do we say that that person can't have a service pet? We know, we see people all the time, whether it's a dog or whatever that particular animal is, that may be of service for that person's medical needs. So I'm not saying that's what it is, but those kind of things may come up during these conversations. And I, I would like to at least get it to second reading. I'm like Robert, at least give applicant and the neighbors, surrounding neighbors an opportunity now that they know what's going on. Because several of them said they wanted to find out what was going on with the rezoning. So I think if we keep that door open at least another two, three weeks, I think we'll only meet the next time, third Monday in August. So that'll be an ample amount of time. And if things haven't gotten worked out, then I can see ultimately coming back and, and we deciding that fate on the second reading.
Mr. Hamilton?
Like Councilman Winkler and Councilman Roddy, I tend to not want to turn something like this down at the first reading. And what's before us is sort of an all or nothing vote right now. And to go all the way to RUD for a handful of animals, a rescue mission, I commend you for what you're doing. And it's a shame that this is really the solution that's before us. And I agree with a lot of your neighbors. I don't think the problem is what y'all are doing. I think the problem is how this fundamentally changes the property and, and impacts the properties around it. I'm not inclined to deny it at first reading. And so I, I encourage staff or zoning, whoever can work with y'all to maybe come up with some type of solution for at least some of the animals that you have on your property. Not saying that I, I certainly don't support changing it to RUD, but I, I just encourage a resolution that makes sense. So I'm going to vote to, to allow it tonight, but that doesn't mean I'm supporting it all the way through.
Yeah.
So, I love the idea of rescuing animals in, in any, any condition, especially something like that, that, you know, we, we certainly don't want to deter that, that kind of activity. But I do think we may be opening the barn door literally for, for future, future animals and types of animals that most people would not want adjacent to them. So I am willing, of course, to let this pass tonight. But one of my questions and that I would like to know before our next reading is, is there an HOA that governs this neighborhood? And what is the HOA rules there? There's no HOA. Maybe need one. I don't know. But the level of government that nobody cares for. But, so I just, I, I just feel like it's, you know, that type of animal is maybe not so bad. I mean, there are a lot of roosters there. And I'm not a big, not a, into denying roosters, as everybody on this council knows. But I think that that's a lot of roosters. And I just don't know, you just don't want something to become a nuisance or more of a nuisance. And in this case, what I would, what I would ultimately be inclined to do, and it probably falls outside of what we're allowed to do, would be since there is a declining inventory of animals, maybe it's, you're allowed to have those until there are no more animals. I think that would be a very fair thing to do for the animals and for the family that's John to rescue these animals.
Mr. Alden?
Okay, thank you. Again, as, as everybody has spoken tonight, I, I will be approving this tonight to open up for further discussion. Again, there is, the process that we go through this as a three reading process allows us to have these discussions, open-ended discussions to look at things as we go through them. I think this is good information that, again, you may bring back and look at other ways to make this work. But I think it's, it's a, it's a good process. It's a, it's a three reading process. So again, I think as a part of this first reading, I will be supporting this tonight.
Motion on the table is to deny with a second. So, and I'm on, look, Brandon, do you, do you want to, do you want to withdraw it?
Yeah, withdraw it. We'll just move to approve. And I think second reading, we can have the discussion a little bit further. I agree with what everyone has said.
Move to approve then.
Second.
All right. Move to approve in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. We move now to our third public hearing. Rezone action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number twenty-two dash fifteen, tax map number seven-one-six-zero-zero-zero-zero-eight-six to rezone from LI to GC, six-point-six-nine acres in District One. Mr. Buonham?
Yes, this application is for the Fort Mill Hyundai, which is off of Gold Hill Road, just west of I-77. It is directly south of the Fort Mill Ford. They are requesting to go from LI to GC. And the reason for that is they would like to do a building expansion. And right now, the vehicle sales or rental use is not permitted in the LI district. So it's a non-conforming use. And by code, you cannot expand a non-conforming use. So their method to be able to do their building expansion is to rezone to the general commercial district. So staff recommends approval of this application. The Ford dealership directly to the north is already zoned general commercial. This would eliminate the non-conforming use there. And the comprehensive plan calls for I-77 corridor employment for this area. So it's not really the targeted employer that we would like to bring in, but it is a regional employer nonetheless, given that it is a large dealership. So therefore, we feel comfortable that this meets the I-77 corridor employment designation as well. And planning commission also votes to recommend approval.
Any questions of staff?
So I will be in support of this tonight. I'll be in support of this. I think the location and the opportunity, again, from a job perspective and, and what it will offer, again, I think it does fit in well with the model and it does offer additional employment for the area. So I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions before we move into public hearing? Thank you, Jonathan. Any, is anyone here wish to speak in favor of this request?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of council. I'll be extremely brief. My name is Mike Pitts. I'm with Parker Poe, 110 East Court Street, Greenville, South Carolina, Suite 200. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the dealership. And just to give you a little bit more information, what's triggering this is Fort Mill Hyundai has a franchise, is a franchise dealer of automobiles from Hyundai. And Hyundai is requiring certain enhancements and modifications to the dealership. So that is why we are here tonight, seeking this rezone, so that we can properly accommodate that, that modification that the manufacturer is requiring of my client. Of course, it will expand the dealership. It will lead to some additional jobs. And another benefit will, by bringing it in to compliance with the other land development regulations as well. So for all those reasons, we would ask that y'all please approve this, this evening. Be happy to answer any questions. Also have Mr. Chris O'Leary, who is the general manager and a co-owner of the dealership.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Move now to public, public hearing request number four. I will say at the outset that the applicant has requested deferral of this item for council to know. But typically what we do is go ahead and move forward with the public hearing as announced, since some folks may be here to speak on that topic. But we will not have typical staff giving information at this point, since the applicant has made that request. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for, in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against? Motion in a second to close public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion for deferral?
Yeah, a motion to defer per applicant.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. We move now to old business. This is rezoning action. Consider second reading case number twenty-two dash eleven, tax map number five-two-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-two to rezone from AGC to RUD, fourteen acres in District Five. I have also been made aware that the applicant has requested deferral of this one as well.
So I move to defer.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Rezoning action. Consider second reading case number twenty-two dash seventeen, tax map number seven-two-one-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-six-four, seven-two-one-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-five apportion to rezone from UD to GC, one-point-nine-six acres in District One. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I would just like to say again, this is another opportunity in our area that we are going to create some additional jobs. The opportunity is great, so I just want to share that with the group. Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. We're now to three, right?
Yeah.
Council to consider approving second reading of an ordinance to abolish the special tax district known as the York County Recreation Tax District, New York County, effective as of December 31, 2022, as described, more particularly herein, to specify the time and application of the final levy of taxes for the operation and maintenance of the York County Recreation Tax District, to provide for the winding down and cessation of operations of the York County Recreation Tax District as an administrative division of the county, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. In a second. Any discussion?
So start off with, I want to thank the REC committee for spending the time that they did on this effort and their continued effort as we move forward with this. We did have a meeting from within our committee that we spoke about and looked at the options that they would be voting on. There is, I know, further discussion going on amongst the REC committee. So that is, that is ongoing. As part of this second reading tonight, there will again be, as mentioned earlier, we have three readings. The next reading will be, third reading will be a month from now. So that REC committee will continue to work towards working out a unanimous agreement. So again, I want to thank the partnership that they're working together to work towards. And again, the final reading on this isn't for another month. So I want to share that with the group. Thank you.
Mr. Winkler?
As I have consistently said for quite some time sitting up here, I do not support doing away with the, the rec tax. I think it's very important to some of the smaller municipalities in my district and in the western side of the county. I have fought to, to keep this for quite a while for, for what it does. It, it has changed a little bit from what it was originally intended to do in 1980, whatever it was when it started. But I still believe it has a purpose and to sunset it, I think is the wrong thing. I will say I won't be, I'll be voting against the sunset tonight, as I did on the first reading. I will say, I won't be, I'll be voting against the sunset tonight, as I did on the first reading. This is the only thing that I've ever known of in government that had to have a unanimous decision. None of us sitting up here, even if we ran unopposed, were unanimously elected. There, anybody that's up here, even if you were unopposed, there were a few people written in on that ballot, there were other people that were voted, none of us were elected unanimously. Very few times, as anything that I'm aware of, required to be a unanimous vote on something that we've done or the county does. And so, you know, we've had a 7-1 vote on more than one time in this recreation tax thing. I do not support sunsetting it, never have, so I will be voting against it tonight.
Mr. Hamilton.
Well, like Mr. Winkler said, I'll be voting against sunsetting this as well. It's kind of a shame that this has turned into a tug-of-war, so to speak, over allocation of dollars between the municipalities, because this isn't about the municipalities, this is about people in the unincorporated areas of this county, so that they have access to parks and recreation throughout the county. And really, what this gives us is, in effect, county-wide parks and recreation, without us, without the county having to build all of these facilities. And it's a shame that, you know, we're to this point, and like Councilman Winkler said, the whole issue is, we have an allocation that requires a unanimous vote of the entire board, and that just doesn't happen. Now, there have been some good faith efforts, I believe, to try to come up with a solution that's a compromise to reallocate dollars. There's been several solutions proposed. And again, because they require unanimity, it's sort of, you know, my way or the highway, or I'm going to take my ball and go home, and, you know, this whole thing disappears. And it's unfortunate that we're, we find ourselves in that situation, because like I said, this is about the people in the unincorporated areas and their access to be able to play sports and use the parks and, you know, be in passive and active recreation. It's not about allocation of dollars between the municipalities. And frankly, to my knowledge, the municipalities have engaged in good faith negotiations to try to come up with a solution. So like I said, I think it's a shame that we're to this point, but I can't vote to sunset it without some sort of plan to replace it.
Mr. Roddy.
Well, I think we, this committee's had overwhelmingly long period of time to work something out. And I do think something unanimous is achievable. We got to this point because new, new people were brought in, brought on board to disperse or get a fair share of the dollars. And if we can't come up with a fair system for everybody, we don't always want the same four, five, or six, always making a determination and leaving those others feeling like they've been left out or slighted. And I think that's why it has to be unanimous going forward, at least on the formula, of how do we disperse this money? How do we equitably distribute this money across different municipalities throughout York County? More people, more communities are starting to get involved with the rec, such as the Lake Wiley Clover area. So we want to make sure that they're fairly represented when it comes to getting those tax dollars back to those communities. And it was pointed out that how much, how much of the total dollars came out of this area? And what was actually going back seemed to be at a disproportionate rate. And I think that the goal was to make it more equitable. And if those involved can't be equitable, then let's just sunset it and do away with it, because we want to be fair to everybody. And if Lake Wiley feels like they're not getting their fair share, and they're putting in a great deal of money, which they are, it's not fair to them. Obviously, we can sit up here and side with those who, side with those municipalities, which we represent. But at the same time, that's not what county government is supposed to do. We can look out for our own municipalities each and every time, but this is about the county. And I think getting everybody on board to agree to a formula is the ultimate thing that we should be shooting for. 10 years down the road, it may slightly change again. But time and time again, we've heard several council members say, it's gotten away from what it was intended to be. So let's get it back to what, the focus of what it's supposed to be, and then go forward. But we can't do that until everybody feels like they're getting their fair share. So I'll be voting to sunset it, and honestly, I don't want, I don't want those funds to go away, because there are county residents that do get to take advantage of a lower cost participating in city recreation. But the message here tonight is, you have another month to come up with a plan that everybody agrees to, and if that's not achievable, we have waiting the other option to what's not being worked out. So we'll get this the third reading to sunset it, and if we hear anything different that has been worked out before then, I'll put my stamp on that approval as well. But tonight, we'll move it forward.
So I've seen the passion in action, because I'm on that committee that sees, the group that comes before us to talk about this, and I'm very familiar with that, with the hashing out that has taken place thus far. And I would argue that we are not at total war. I don't think the coalition is at total, is at war at all, quite frankly. I think that the importance of recreation is something that is unanimous. And I think the best negotiations are when everybody walks away from the table, having given something, having left something on the table. And I have faith that that's what's going to happen. And, and, you know, we are asking that Lake Wiley be added to that mix. Lake Wiley is a very important part of the county, and we have a lot of kids out there who also are, you know, are using Field Day Park for recreation. So I just, I think that we've got just the exact right amount of time for the coalition to come up with something, work on something, and, and show us, show us their sportsmanship-like behavior in this case. So I have, I have all the faith in the world that something's going to come of this in a positive light. Tonight, I'm going to recommend, I'm not going to recommend, but I'm going to support the sunset, because that's what management recommends. And hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have something that we can wrap our arms around and move forward to continue to provide recreation for all the children in the county.
So, I, this is one of the hardest things for me since I've been on council, believe it or not, because I struggle with it, because it is a program that is divided up over the entire county. And it helps the underprivileged kids to be able to participate in sports, whereas we couldn't do it before. However, one of our biggest problems, or one of the biggest problems I have with it is 58% of the funds comes from commercial business. It's not coming from the residents. So we can sit here and tout it as a tax cut all we want, but it comes down, according to the numbers from the COG, of 152,000 people in the district. It comes out to $3.87 per person that is paying for kids to get a lower rate to play youth sports, which I think we've heard all the stories about how the youth sports help us with keeping our crime levels down as far as showing leadership, teaching kids things. I coached in youth sport for many years, and some of the other options that we've heard are things like, one of the biggest complaints is the money is not being spent where it is generated. Well, I could make that argument for anything. That's the point of having taxes. If we were putting the money back exactly to where it's being generated, through roads or anything else, what's the point in having the government distribute the tax to begin with? Because the wealthy's going to be able to afford it, there's no reason that they need to help out the people who can't afford it. So I struggle back and forth. I am forced sunsetting it because of the tax burden on businesses. However, I do want to keep something in place. I'm disappointed that we don't have an option. I'm disappointed that it does have to be unanimous. I'm not hearing any solutions that have been unanimous or anything close to it. So I will be voting to sunset it, and we'll see what happens next month.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to, five to two. Oh my, it's getting late. Council to consider adopting a resolution, the York County Council supporting the imposition of term limits at all levels of government within South Carolina, endorsing the passage of state legislation to impose term limits and providing for other matters relating thereto.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Well, okay, go ahead. Okay, thank you. All right, so, term limits, I agree in term limits. I agree. I mean, when I was in, you know, being on the school board for eight years, two terms, I felt that was enough to move on. I'm a firm believer in term limits. That was a decision, though, that I made. And, and I think it's important that the voters always make the final decision on these things. When I look at this here, I, this is a resolution, to me, that doesn't hold strength. It doesn't really address where I feel term limits need to start off with, and that's at the federal level and the state level. That's where they need to start. These types of things need to start at the top and then trickle down to us. So tonight, I'm going to put forth a motion to refer this to September's County Council workshop for further discussion in regards to this.
Currently, the motion on the table, unless the folks who made the motion are willing to withdraw the motion, we need to have the discussion and deal with the motion that's currently on the table. So we need to continue with the discussion.
Continue the discussion, okay. For now, just, I'll withdraw that. Put y'all for a moment.
For me, I also believe in term limits, which is part of the reason that I decided not to run again this time. I've served for eight years. I do believe at the local level that things are to the point to where at city and county level, you know, the voters can decide, because I'm seated an incumbent when I decide to run. When you get to state and federal level, I agree, that's where the change needs to be made. But we're not going to get the state and federal people to make a change unless they hear from us at the local level that that's what we want. And that's what this resolution is, is just a, and resolutions are honestly worth about the price of the paper they're written on. They don't do anything, they don't hold anybody to anything, other than what they do is they do send a notice to Columbia and to Washington that if this passes, that the majority of this council supports them doing something at their level to put in some term limits. As we sit right here today, if we voted unanimously for this, which we're not going to do, it wouldn't do one thing different for any of us sitting here. It does not change our term limits, it does not tell any of us we can't run again, other than me, because I didn't file, so I can't run again, even if I changed my mind. But, but anybody else can run, you know, all they want. This is just a resolution to try to send a message to the state and federal level where I believe we need term limits. You know, I, I think because of the money and the way that people vote, when they get to that level, it becomes where they're voting to keep themselves in office, instead of what's best for their constituents a lot of times. And it takes so much money to get into some of those positions, that the average, everyday person can't do it. And I believe that's what the country was founded on, was you as a restaurant owner, you as a farmer, me as a financial advisor, got the local people to elect us to go to Columbia or to go to Washington to do their business and come back home and run our business. Not to move to Washington or Columbia and be a career politician. We were to be statesmen who went and did that and came back. Unfortunately, the system has changed. And we're not going to get anybody up there who's feeding off the system to make a change, unless they hear from enough of us. That's why I support this resolution. It does not do anything other than send a message to people who can maybe do something about it that if it passes, the majority of us would like a change. And maybe a few more council districts across the state or the country will follow. Somebody's got to step out and be first and set the example. Maybe we will tonight, and maybe we won't, we'll see what happens with the vote.
Yeah, so whenever we originally proposed this, it was based on 12 years. And the reason the 12 years was selected was because, if you look at our United States senators, they are six-year terms. So it'd make no sense to say eight years or 10 years. That way, it was set as two terms for a United States senator. The way the resolution reads, we did remove the number of years, which I actually think is a better idea for anything that's going to go to the state level, because then we can just simply say, hey, we as York County Council agree that term limits should be in place for all levels of government. It doesn't, like Robert said, it does not change anything to do with the way that we are doing things right now. If we have York County pass this resolution, hopefully, we can get other counties to follow suit. And then that allows the state to open it up and actually have a true discussion on how we move forward from there. You know, and one of the things where it says, it says limit at all levels of government within South Carolina, and it says state legislation to impose the term limits. So this is not us sitting up here at York County stating that we are imposing that we have to set term limits for ourselves. This is an attempt that we can put forth. Currently, there are 15 states throughout the United States that have term limits through their state level. You know, whenever I ran for office, I ran based on term limits. And I, I understand that, you know, as Mr. Aldette said, that he does not believe that this has enough teeth. I believe this is the, just, just the right amount of teeth to do anything on the state level. Because if we sit here and we dictate the exact terms that we think is right, then that's going to keep other counties from saying like, hey, we're not on board with that because you said 12 years instead of eight years or nine years. We're just leaving it open to state that we support term limits. And I think it's extremely important for us to get this passed. You know, I know there's been a push to get it to a workshop, which I don't believe that there needs to be any change with the way that it is written. Some of the positives of having term limits, number one, it brings in fresh ideas. It brings out fresh voters. Whenever you have someone that's been in office for a long time, people get comfortable. I personally believe, you know, one of the arguments is that, well, you don't have enough time to lead a committee. I think that's one of the problems with our government. You should not have, you should be able to walk in as an everyday citizen and understand our government, the way things work, and be able to step in. We shouldn't complicate things so much to, whereas everyday people can't serve. We don't need, you know, I'm completely against career politicians. It also limits the, the chance of corruption within government. Whenever you have lobbyists that are talking to our state, federal, you know, once they've got someone in their pocket, it makes it a whole lot easier. And it's hard to beat an incumbent. If you look at it, at our approval ratings on a national level, a lot of the politicians are around 20%, yet they're elected close to 80% as their chance. And that's simply because they are the incumbent. So unless we have something put in place, none of that's going to change. I'd love for it to start at the top and come its way down. However, we've got term limits on president. No one's put it, you know, through our Congress. And if we can't go from the top down, why not start from the bottom up? And I thought, whenever I was elected to York County Council, that I could come in and I could change term limits and say, okay, I think everyone on council should be term limited. But not everyone agrees with that. And I understand their argument. You know, if they're representing their district, the voters can decide that. But what this does is allows us to have that ammunition on the state level to open that discussion within the legislative there, so.
I don't know how they feel about term minimums, but maybe that's something that we need to consider, because that's very costly for the taxpayers when someone doesn't serve their full term. I think, Brandon, you're the, you're the example of that, and you're also the example of someone who was very successful in beating a long-term incumbent. And, and I think that at the lowest possible levels of government, I, I think it's out of place. And I think that we're not voting for term limits, we're devolving the power of the local people over to the state, which is the very opposite of home rule. I've never had a birthday cake with a candle that I blew out, that I didn't make a wish that I believed could come true. So when y'all sit up here and you talk about this is going nowhere, you know, it's just something that we want to do, and, you know, the majority of council, I mean, that's a wasted wish on a birthday candle right there, as far as I'm concerned. So it's very concerning to me. And I'll speak of Ann Harvey. You know, there's been some word about Kerwood Chapel, but I'm going to speak about Ann Harvey, who served on the Clover Town Council for many, many years. And you know what? If they could still have her on that council today, they, they would vote her in, because she worked very hard for the people. She was an excellent, just like Kerwood, she was an excellent. an excellent, just like Kerwood, she was an excellent representative of the people. And had she had term limits placed on her, the people would not have been able to vote for somebody who was a phenomenal representative of them. So it's not about us, it's about the people. You said it. It's about, it's about the people and who they're allowed to vote for. And you know, in today's world, it's hard to get people to run, not in District Three, because there were a lot of people that ran in District Three. But you know what? You look at most of the races, and you, sometimes, in my race, nobody stepped up, you know? People like to have choices, and that's the key. They like to have choices. And for us to say that we're going to put a term limit on somebody, and what if nobody, what if nobody steps up and runs against somebody who's at that, whatever the magical year number is? I mean, I just, I just think that you are taking away voters' rights. And it's not about, it's certainly not about us serving, it's about you, the people, electing who you want to represent you.
My next. I think you was looking over here on my paper, because I had Kerwood, I had voters' rights, I had wasted time.
You didn't have Ann Harvey, though, did you?
I didn't have any.
That's right.
And as different council members were speaking, I was just kind of making some little notes here. And we say it's not worth the papers written on. We say it's the biggest waste of time. We talk about the cost it is for taxpayers to run elections, and we talk about voters' rights. But what if you vote for something that's worthless, a waste of time, waste of staff's time, because staff had to put an abundance of time to write this resolution. Staff had to do everything that it would do, whether it's rezoning or whatever. Our county attorney works on this. His time was probably better well-spent working on getting our $21 million back for the Panthers than working on a senseless resolution that's going nowhere, that's a worthless birthday wish for a candle. The voters have a right to determine how many years someone serves. When this first started out, the magical number was 12. And you look around the room, I've been here 12 years, so was that coming after me to say, well, bump, I think you've served too long? I would have loved to seen this come up with my good friend Kerwood Chapel sitting here, who's served 20-plus years. The lights would have got turned out. The power would have went off before he got through telling anybody that he's served too long, that he's been corrupt, he's gotten, set in his ways. It would have never happened. We would have been here till the cows came home if Kerwood Chapel was sitting up here. We should be here till the cows come home because everybody up here should be against this. It takes the rights away from you, the voters, to determine if this individual has worked hard enough to continue to earn your vote. And like Allison said, Brandon's the classic case of if the voters feel an incumbent doesn't do his job, they vote him out. He's the very well recipient of hard work that he put in. I watched his campaign. He beat a longtime incumbent. He put in the work. Whether Britt didn't put in the work, that's to be determined. But you can't say that we don't, we already have term limits. We have four-year term limits. And if it's renewed by the voters, do you have a new four-year term limit? I was here when we were on just two-year terms. The issue with that was we replaced five council members out of seven. You can imagine what that was like with Kerwood being the one that was still here. Chad Williams was the other one that was here with two years' experience. Kerwood was here with probably about 16 or 18 at that point. We went from two years to four years. Now we're trying to say, we went from two to four, now we're finna say, we need to set an end date. We need to set a sunset date on how long you can serve. But if someone still has that passion, puts in the work, does a good job, those voters will determine, those voters will respect that work that the individual puts in. And I know this is not about me, but it's about the people, taking the right away from the voter. Because if we would have been, if we set this at 12 years, if some magical number comes back, but do you honestly think people who's been serving in Columbia for 20 years, 24 years, 26 years, are going to now say, yep, we're going to close the door behind me, I think the term limits should be put in place after I've sat here for 30 years? Rock Hill wouldn't have had a long-term mayor. Kevin, Gary Simmel wouldn't have served his 30 years in the House. Some of these other lustrous elected officials throughout this county wouldn't have been able to do the immaculate job that they've done over that long period of time. And who's to say, just by saying that you can't serve, are we guaranteed the next individual's going to step up and do a good job? Because at that point, if nobody runs and only one person says he wants to do it, now that person wins by default. We're kind of stuck with what the cat drug in at that point. Let's don't think we can change the American values by saying, let's send it up the flagpole and see what comes back. We know what we got. We have a system that works. And it's every four years on this council, we are reviewed, we are evaluated, we are voted in or voted out. And to think about, I heard the comment about senators who serve six years, so you can't do eight years because that's in the middle of a term. Do you know how hard it is to raise funds, to run a Senate campaign? And once you get there, the learning curve, if you just walked off the street, if we said, all right, senators, you can serve 12 years, you got two terms. And the next Joe Blow or Sally Mae walks up and says, I'll do it. We have foreign policies, we have domestic policies, we have all this stuff that goes into such a high level. Do we honestly think that's going to work? So why are we wasting councils' time? Why are we wasting staff's time? Why are we even wasting paper to send something to Columbia that has no chance in South Carolina of passing? This council should send a message to the people who saying they're going to support this, who's making a hail mary. We need that hail mary on our $21 million. I'd much rather be talking about that tonight. I'd much rather for our county attorney to be working on something with our attorneys to get our money back. But to send something to Columbia that has a snowball's chance, what are we doing? We up here jockeying for a political position in public, or we're really putting something forth that has a realistic chance of happening? Of course, you can tell by my rhetoric, I'm not supporting it. You can say 20 years, I still wouldn't support it, because it takes the right and the vote out of the people's hands every four years. So I won't be supporting.
Mr. Hamilton?
I'll keep it short, just because we've been on this topic for a while. But I may be the anomaly, but I do believe that term limits are important at every level of government. And I can tell you, it's not going to happen at the federal or state level unless the people send a message. And people in York County and across the country support term limits. You look at any poll, everyone, vast majority of people are in support of term limits, especially at the federal or state level. But for me, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And if I'm going to tell them they need term limits, then I better be willing to do it at this level as well. We've heard a lot of talk about voters. The voters are the ones who say they support term limits. It's not our job in York County to be followers and wait for someone else to make the first move. In York County, I believe we are leaders. And we have to send the message to Columbia, we have to send the message to DC, we have to send a strong message that the people in York County support term limits at every level of government. And if we vote against this tonight, we are not sending that message. We're letting the people here down. So I'm fully supportive of this, and I don't think it's a fool's errand, as it's been alluded to. Anything worth doing is worth trying. This is, it isn't a fool's errand to try. It isn't a fool's errand to try to lead. It isn't a fool's errand to send a strong message. When this system was originally designed by our founders, they didn't intend anyone to spend a career in any office, whether it was the local or the state level. That wasn't the intention. No office, whether it's the Office of President, whether it's Senator, whether it's Congress, whether it's, you name it, no office should be a career for anyone. It should be a service, do your time, and let someone else serve. That's the way our system was intended. And a lot of people told those people, when they were going about trying to set up that system, that what they were doing was a fool's errand, that it wasn't worth their time, that they couldn't take on tyranny, that they couldn't take on the crown and win, but they did. So I don't think, you know, the odds being stacked against us is a reason to abandon the mission. If nothing else, that just should strengthen our resolve. So I'm fully supportive of it.
Mr. Winkler started this out by saying that he agrees that this, that what's on paper is worthless. I'm not in favor of passing anything that is worthless. This has spent all of two minutes in Finance and Operations, and I'm very concerned about the fact that it appears that no one will, who is pursuing this, will at least take more time to make sure that we get it right and that it does something that empowers the people. I appreciate Brandon's passion on this, but you don't need a resolution to go to the state level to make this change. The county council, and what folks may not realize, the county council doesn't have any authority at all to determine term limits for this office. And I'm going to speak from the heart. I think that when you go and serve, the greatest man I've known who has served in politics has been Kerwood Chapel. That man was elected 11 times. Half of that time, there were special interests and money that was coming after him, trying to get him out because he was representing the people. That's the kind of man that we want in office. And I honestly believe that if his hearing wasn't failing, he'd still be in office. I just spoke with him last week. He cares about the people that he serves, and he steps up, and he does the right thing. Our job is to empower the people that we serve. The way we empower the people we serve is to stop federal overreach because that power is so far away from us. We increase state and local rights. We keep money out of our election process, and we give voters more opportunities to exercise their vote. Power is best at the local level. The only public person who showed up at this meeting was Ms. Helms. Everything she said was right, and she said, don't take my rights away from me. I think at the very least, this council should have considered referring this to a workshop, to where there was more discussion that could have been happened, and there is more that could have been done. This is my turn to speak, you've had your turn to speak. This is my turn to speak.
At a meeting, you're the one who made the recommendation that goes to FNO.
This resolution does nothing to limit federal overreach. It actually does quite the opposite. It weakens state and local leadership because it is completely devoid of any reference to the federal term limits. I am happy if the folks that, sitting here want to retract it, and we move it to a public workshop so that we can have more discussion about what is the best way to empower the public. But I think that we've got to do a couple of things. The love of money is the root of all evil, and I believe that firmly in my heart. If we really want to empower the people, instead of creating arbitrary limits on who can run and who they can vote for, we should do everything possible to get money and special interests out of our government. And I think that we ought to consider, and this should be changed, to include that only voters in each election can contribute money to the campaign. If you're not an actual voter, you can't contribute. Mr. Guffey has recently experienced that. Money from out of state and out of district and big lobbyists, we should limit them because they don't have the vote. I believe that the best course of action, and the one that is most, that would be better for the people that we serve, is for us to defer this, have a public workshop, and let's do something that is actually worth the paper that it is written on. And if, I'll give it one more chance, do the folks that moved in second this, would you agree to defer this?
I'd like to reply, since my name's been mentioned three times up here.
The question is, will the people who made the motion, will you agree to defer it?
Absolutely not. In this, in a previous council meeting, you're the one who stated what the proper process, checked with by our county attorney, to bring this resolution before the council, and now you're trying to change the process yet again.
And I'll continue this conversation.
This process was the process that you recommended properly. Are you going to let me speak? Because you asked how we felt about it. It went to FNO, it was brought to FNO, it was amended at FNO, and then we voted upon it, which is the process that you set out for us with the consent of our county attorney in a previous meeting. And now, all of a sudden, at the last minute in the meeting, we're in the middle of a vote, you're complaining about the process that you set out for us to bring this resolution to council.
What I'm doing, and we did, this is the process that was followed. It went to Finance and Operations. I went and sat in on that meeting, and Finance and Operations spent all of two minutes debating it. This affects everyone, and it's a huge amount.
So it didn't cost us a whole lot of money.
What I did is to look at what Mr. Aldette has suggested, and I agree with him. I think we should defer this so that we can have more public input, that we can do something that's actually worth the paper that it's written on. And there's nothing that stops us from continuing to have this discussion. I also reached out to Mr. Winkler. Mr. Winkler said that he is not willing for this to be referred back to his committee. Typically, when we refer something to a committee, it's studied, there's time that's spent on it, there is opportunity for public to be heard, and that wasn't done. And I understand that Mr. Winkler will not agree to that. So the only option is for this to go to a public workshop, so that it can be litigated.
Our meeting was closed, our meeting was open to the public.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
No, I'd like the chance to reply.
Yeah, I was called out on this as well.
Yeah, names are being called out, and we get a chance to reply.
I've called for the vote.
Call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye.
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 It's amazing at the levels that this goes. This is ridiculous.
All opposed?
I hope, I hope all of the public is watching this, everyone.
Motion fails. Is there a new motion? Do we want to defer this?
Move to deny.
Second.
Motion in a second. Motion on the table is to deny adoption of the resolution.
Well, it's already died. There's no reason to deny.
We still have a new motion. Is there any other comment?
Call for the vote.
I mean, if anyone wants to make a comment, now's your time to do it.
Oh, comments now? Yeah. I mean, first of all, we're told it takes two minutes in FNO, but yet it cost our county attorney all this time and all this money. And next thing is that, you know, it's not worth the piece of paper that's written on. So why are you fighting so hard if it's not worth the piece of paper? How long have I been fighting for term limits? Ever since day one of me getting elected, of coming in here, have I been fighting for term limits? I've gotten the runaround every turn, every turn that I take over it. And I hope everyone does see this. This is our problem with government. It's whenever elected officials aren't even willing to actually put the power back in the hands of the people. Do you believe a president should be able to serve forever? Our government was not set up that way. All this is, is a resolution. Everyone's acting as if it is a personal attack on them, which is ludicrous. This goes to the state, for the state to be able to make a recommendation. Without it, our state legislators will never have term limits being put on themselves. As Joel said, we are set here to lead. I just find it, it's beyond frustrating. This is the most frustrated I've been since being on council, for sure. But I do hope everyone in the public does watch this, considering 86% of the people agree with term limits. I hope that you see how your elected officials are voting on this, something that they claim is not worth the piece of paper that they're written on, and yet they're not able to just go ahead and pass it and send it down to the state where real action could possibly happen. That's it.
Mr. Winkler?
I'm going to say a couple of things. One, obviously, I have no political reason for doing this. I'm not running for reelection. It doesn't affect me, I don't care. But whatever, it came before Finance and Operations, and it had 12 years on it when it came before Finance and Operations. I'm the one that said I would not support it if it had an exact number on it, because I don't know that it's our job to set that. And personally, I felt like 12 years singled out Mr. Roddy, and I felt like that was wrong. So I'd said I would not support it. The years need to come off. I support term limits. But I have not, I can't control term limits, just like I can't control federal dollars that are going into it. I can't control somebody running against Brandon, getting a whole bunch of money out of North Carolina. The only thing I can do is try to voice my opinion for a resolution that might get somebody's attention higher than me that can do something about it. Because nothing that we're talking about can we vote on and change, other than a resolution to show we support something. And I'm trying to show what I support. I believe that, as I said, that that, now, I didn't, it came before FNO. I chaired that committee. Ms. Cox did call me in between meetings this evening. I've been on since 4:30, and I actually was in the middle of one, we were supposed to be getting started, and asked me if I would agree to defer this tonight and have it go to another committee or another workshop. I said, no. We've gone through the process that was prescribed, and I felt like it was on the agenda, we needed to vote on it tonight, up or down. And as I said earlier, we'll either support it or we won't. But at the end of the day, that's done. I've voiced my opinion, I voted how my conscience has told me to vote, and what I've said for the eight years I've been up here. Anything we do here... Anything we do here is nothing more than a resolution. And however you want to word it, a resolution doesn't carry weight. Is it, yeah, it's, you know, dollar-wise or worth it. We can't spend anything other than a little bit of maybe Mr. Kendry's time on doing it, but it can at least be something that we can send to people who might be able to make an adjustment on term limits that we support it. And that's why I did not, you know, we went through the process that we were told to go through for it, and to come up when we're walking to a council meeting and want to change the process, I said, "No, I would not do it."
I'll say, I can, I'm fine with respectfully disagreeing with anyone when it comes to their opinion on a policy matter, especially something as important as term limits. You can come down on either side of this fence and still be a reasonable person, but it is absolutely shameful to hide behind some imagined procedural issue when it comes to this. If you disagree with term limits, you can say you disagree with term limits without acting like the folks that are involved with this resolution somehow didn't follow proper procedure. This resolution, there were four people that stated their support of term limits in after-meeting comments, where each council member gets to say something. Four people said it. It was then referred by our chairperson to F and O. Our county attorney agreed that this was the correct process. F and O reviewed this in a duly noticed public meeting that was available for anyone to come to, which is why Chairwoman Cox was there. It was brought before that committee, and it was properly voted upon after an amendment. To pretend like this wasn't properly followed procedurally is just shameful. I mean, that's, it's flabbergasting to pretend that, and if you don't support it, that's fine. I can disagree with anyone on this issue. But to act like we didn't do what the proper procedure was is just untruthful, and it's shameful at best.
Mr. Roddy.
You know, you can hear someone make a comment, hold a conversation, and what you pull out of it depends on the person that's listening and how they perceive things. Because what I heard Ms. Cox say was, "Let's put this, let's redo this and put it, put something on paper that means something." I never heard her question the procedure. All I heard her say was, "Let's put something on paper that was meaningful and not worthless." And if I'm not mistaken, it was Councilmember Winkler that said it wasn't worth the paper it was written on. Obviously, he supports it, and now we're hearing, the first I heard of term limits was a little over a month ago. At the very first, very first mention was when I was in this chamber. Nobody called me to poll me to say, "Hey, Councilmember, what do you think about this? We're thinking about putting a resolution together." As a longest-serving member up here with 12 years, I think I was due that respect, especially when you put 12 years on it initially. Then we hear 86% supports term limits. Well, we just heard the comment about how many incumbents continue to get elected, so if 86% of Americans support term limits, they wouldn't continue to get reelected. Where is 86% coming from? No one said, "Hey, here's an article, here's some research, here's a survey, here's a poll." So we just grabbing numbers out of the air, throwing them around. You don't get to make this stuff up. So if 86% of Americans support term limits, 80-plus percent wouldn't continue to get reelected. We heard that number thrown out. Don't know how true that is. But you don't get to make this stuff up, and if you're gonna put something together, let's have the research on paper, let's have the statistics, let's have the data to back it up before we send a worthless piece of paper to Columbia to ask them to do something about something that we totally don't know anything about. Because I would question 86%. If we polled people here, I bet you it wouldn't be over 50% that support term limits. And this looks like a pretty reasonable makeup of our county. I guarantee you, 86% of the people sitting here wouldn't agree with what we're doing up here. The next thing I wrote down was, this has not been something we've talked about 18 months since Mr. Goffey's taken, taken seat on council. We've talked about 1,000 things, but this has not been one of them. The first I heard of term limits even coming up was a little over a month ago. He's been here 18, 18 months, a year and a half. So this, let's don't frame this like this has been an ongoing, everyday thing. None of us talks about something every single day because we have so much on our plate to deal with. But we are way off if we think this is the right thing to do and that this is gonna make a difference or make a change at the federal level, at the state level, when people serve probably, I'm gonna make this up, on average, 18 years. I'm just pulling the numbers out the hat since everybody else seems to get to do the same thing. I'm probably close to being right by saying everybody that's gone to Columbia to serve in Columbia probably serves, on average, about 18 years. Do you honestly think they're gonna set term limits? And they would look like a fool to say, "Yeah, we're gonna set term limits, but we're gonna make it 20 years." But that ain't a term limit. That's damn near career. But we need to kill this right now. No more workshops, no more conversation. Let's be done and over with it. Let's send that message to our York County citizens and not worry about sending a message to Columbia or to the national federal government.
So-
Just brought it.
Yeah. So, back to the original discussion. There's a need to go to workshop with this. We do three readings for everything. We go across the board. We open up discussion, as we did earlier, about issues. This needed to go to a county, county council workshop to really discuss this, because there's a lot to it. And if you're gonna do something, you need to have teeth in it, you need to have some substance. And that's the reason why I put that motion forward. I know we've already done the vote. I think everybody's had the discussion. But again, the purpose of my discussion, bringing it up, is this needed further discussion in a workshop, but there's not the support here for it.
I think Ms. Love has made the motion. I would request, as the fourth person, clearly, that we defer this to the next available workshop, which would be September, for us to actually do something that makes sense and that looks out for the people, gives the public an opportunity to hear that. I'd like to know if the folks that made the motion and seconded it will consider, reconsider that.
I thought it was to deny, not to defer.
That's what her motion was. I'm asking her if she'll reconsider her motion, like I did with the ones who moved to approve.
To make a motion to defer it to the workshop?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And the second?
I'll second it.
All right, so the motion, the second, is to defer it to the public workshop in September. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. That was fun. Let's see. Item number two, council discussion regarding maternity and paternity leave for employees. I believe that was put on the agenda at the request of Mr. Goffey.
Yes. I would just like for management to work out some numbers for us on looking at offering paternity, maternity leave. One of the biggest problems we have is with recruiting, and I believe that it's a way to recruit young professionals, whether it be in law enforcement, whether it be within the county, for people actually looking to start their career, and I believe that it would be something that would, I guess, give us a bigger bang for our buck for getting employees. So I'd like to see some numbers on that, if possible.
Any other discussion, Mr. Winkler?
I'll say, I'll support looking at that. I'm always open to look to, you know, looking at what other benefits we can offer our staff. You know, we already, I believe, when you go out on maternity leave, you already qualify for an FMLA, which is, you know, a leave, and I know, at least with the company that I work with, you know, you qualify for that, but they, you know, when my administrative assistant went out a few, several years ago for a child, she had to use up some vacation time and stuff until short-term disability kicked in or whatever. So I'm open to, I'm always open to looking at what benefits we can offer and what they cost and what the options are. I'm not sure at this point, because it's not something other than a discussion of it, what that would look like or what it would be. You know, normally, you know, that's a more of an insurance question, I think, for whether we want to offer short-term disability or different things like that than a paid time off kind of thing. But I'm open for management to look at it and see what they come back with.
So what's the situation now if someone goes out, just without any-
I think that's probably why we, this is discussion only, is just to, since we already have two members of the council who have approved that, the next step would be to move this to F and O, which deals with the evaluation and gathering information on what the county's benefits package is, and specifically looking to see what this would cost and what the other benefits are. I don't think we have the answers to that as the question. I think this was raised for discussion, so-
I'm supportive of it, and I think it's important that any benefit package that we have, when we're competing, we have a lot of unfilled opportunities within the county, and it's hard to find people who actually want to fill those positions. And it's important that our benefits are competitive with the overall marketplace. And since this is getting referred to F and O, I assume that we'll have to spend more than two minutes debating it, and I assure you that we will.
And I believe Mr. Huds, but it looked like he wanted to say something, but I'm not sure.
Well, I just, and I think this does help clarify what we're doing. We don't, council doesn't have a specific request for what those benefits would be. I think you would like us to analyze maybe how we compare to other similar organizations and what we might support as staff, or could at least recommend some options for council that y'all could pick for maybe a menu of items that-
Now, I do have a specific request for paternity, paternity. We can look at the other options and the benefits, but I specifically want numbers on that.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you don't have a specific proposal for maternity or paternity. I mean, like a number of weeks or anything like that. You would look for us to put that-
Correct.
... recommendation together. So just wanted to clarify, but thank you.
And when you have that, it'll come before F and O.
Is there any other discussion on the issue?
Yeah, so I'd be interested in identifying, so if we're looking to modify it from a county perspective, what is the, what does it look like across the state and each of the other Again, that's definitely important, obviously, thank you.
I think if we're going about this, I mean, what I would ask at F and O, and clearly you're in charge of what you're gonna do, but I think we ought to take a look at, not only what is the cost to the taxpayers and what is the recommendation to keep us consistent with surrounding areas, to make us competitive, but I think that we also need to take a look at how, how do we deliver those services in the best way? And I think that that's gonna take, and also survey the employees and find out from them, what are the things that attract them? I think that it's gonna take a little bit of work, and I think we ought to make sure that we, that we do all that's necessary before we take any action so that we can justify it to the taxpayers. So at this point, it will be referred to F and O to gather that information. Number three, council to approve the purchase of additional public safety software licensing for use by the sheriff's office from Central Square Technologies, formerly Zerker Technologies, LLC of Lake Mary, Florida, for a total cost of $43,781.03 as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, one question I have about this, when these, when this equipment is purchased, do we know what type of warranty and support we get once we receive this equipment? Is there?
I'm sure there are some warranties. I don't think it's stipulated in the agenda item. We do have our, the sheriff here, if you want to, do you have some basic knowledge of what that would be?
I'm sorry, Director Brandon was distracting me and did not know what particular equipment are we talking about? Are we talking about the Gentax?
Yes.
The-
Central Source-
Correct. The software.
Software.
So the, the 25 licenses, I think it is, software licenses, that is to cover the cost of our records management system in the mobile units. That's a one-time cost. It's a, it's a franchise fee.
Okay.
To put that software in the Gentax, which is the next agenda item.
Okay.
The Gentax are the replacement mobile data. When you walk by one of the police cars, you see the computer sitting in the, in the stand. Those come with a one-year warranty, and I think we purchase an additional four years. That's in the cost of the, of the equipment.
All right, thank you, Ken.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Council to approve a ward regarding bid number 2814 for the purchase of 130 rugged GTAC V110 G6 mobile data computers, laptops, 130 Havas docks and T10 GTAC V110 office docks to the lowest responses and responsible bidder, Preferred Communications, Inc. of Butler, North Carolina, for a total cost of $528,826.04 as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Tolson?
I just wanted to clarify with Councilman Aldette. If that's any different, I'll make sure that what I said tonight was correct on the warranty and the service on the equipment, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Huds know and you directly.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Committee and other reports. Planning and zoning committee met Monday, July 11th. Chairwoman Allison Love.
Planning and zoning committee met. Councilman Roddy and Councilman Goffey were present, and we discussed multiple things. We are still in the process of reviewing anything that has to do with Recode. So if anybody has anything that you want to talk about Recode, just let us know. We'll add that to our next agenda. We've been meeting quite often. In this, on this last agenda, we talked about tattoos and tattoo, I don't know if they still call them parlors or not, but tattoo establishments, and how, how we could make those more readily available to, to people who are looking to get into that business in the county. They, we decided to vote to remove a buffer of 200 feet between that type of business and another, other businesses. We did, my request was to keep, keep that ordinance as is in the Lake Wile overlay. We talked about landscape requirements and whether or not a landscape architect should be required on a plan, as opposed to just the engineer, whoever's doing that plan, being able to do the landscape, landscape also. And then we talked about buffers for existing businesses, and so it was a lot of detail, a lot of, lot of detail in that meeting, but overall, a really good meeting, and I think we're making a lot of headway and some, you know, minor changes that make big differences.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Just as a reminder as well, that August workshop will address the joint, will be the joint workshop with the CBA and with the planning commission to address some of the concerns there, just a reminder to the council. Finance and Operations Committee, Chairman Robert Winkler.
Thank you. Finance and Operations met this evening at 5:30. We took up some consideration of applications for service. On the York County Forever Board, we voted to defer a second term that was coming open there. For Lake Wile parts and rec, we voted for the recommendation of Bill Murray to a first term. For Catawba Mental Health Board, we voted for the recommendation of the appointment of Maraja, I believe Mac, for a first term. And for Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board, we voted for the appointment of Frank McKinney to a first term.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. We do not have any, actually, we move to council member, new non-agenda comments. Mr. Winkler.
One thing that we, we had a meeting earlier today, Councilmember Love and myself with a constituent, and something that's come up a good bit, and since your committee is looking at Recode, I would like to ask that the committee look at what are called TIEs or traffic impact analysis. In particular, we're looking at what level, we have a tier zero, a tier one, and a tier two. And what that is, is what looks at how much of an impact a change in a business use or a change in a property use has on traffic. And currently, we found out, you know, if we're looking at a business like this in rural part of the county, the western part of the county, if it has more than 100 trips per day or more than 25 trips during peak hour time, which is, I believe, is like seven to nine and four to six or something like that, if it creates more than 25 trips in that timeframe, then they have to do what's called a tier one study, which costs somewhere around 10 grand to do that. And I believe we do need to know what the impact is on these things when we do a business change, but I'm not sure 25 is the right number to require a small business or a small church or somebody who's making a small adjustment to spend 10 grand to pay for an engineer- or a small church or somebody who's making a small adjustment to spend ten grand to pay for an engineer study to figure out exactly what those twenty-five cars do to the traffic in the area. So I would like to ask your committee to look at that and make sure we've got what we believe are the best numbers for those tiers.
Happy to go.
Mr. Aldette?
Um, so I do have some good news to share. Um, in our last RFATs meeting, one of the things we've been working on for the elderly and disabled in Fort Mill, Teguket, and Lake Wiley, we've been working with access transportation, which is part of the council for aging. They, they work with them. And in you parts of York County, um, Rock Hill, areas around Rock Hill, et cetera, they have an opportunity to call on demand if you're elderly, disabled, and an access vehicle will come pick them up, bring them to the doctor's appointment or bring them to the pharmacy or bring them to, even to get groceries. And this has been going on for years, except Fort Mill, Teguket, and Lake Wiley have been cut out of it because of a federal overlay that's coming out of Charlotte, the transportation program. So in the last eight months, we've been working to get the elderly, disabled in those three areas access to this on-demand service. So the good news I want to share with you, it looks like as of September, we're gonna be announcing the launch of this program. So disabled elderly will be able to make a phone call. They'll come get picked up. They gotta go to a doctor's appointment or treatment or go to the pharmacy. They'll be able to have access to this as an on-demand service as the rest of the county does. Again, I want to share that good news that everyone, so.
That's great.
Yep.
Mr. Roddy?
Uh, real quick, I'll say, um, by the time we have our next meeting, school will be back in. I know a lot of, uh, communities throughout York County will be having these back-to-school events where, um, whether it's organizations or neighborhoods giving away school supplies. So I would just encourage everyone, if you see some of these pop-up events or you know someone doing a back-to-school supply drive, definitely support those because, um, they really make an impact on kids in every community who, uh, struggles to get school supplies or you, you want to have, send those kids back to school with a good warm for the feeling knowing that the community supports their educational efforts and things like that. So we'll start to see some of those activities go on. But definitely, um, keep the kids safe as they go out to the bus stops and wish them well as the upcoming school year starts up before we meet again.
Um, yeah, I would like to, I, I know we've discussed electronic billboards on the I-77 corridor and zoning. I'd like for us to take a vote on that so we can get that put to an agenda if need be.
Has it been through committee?
Did we talk about that?
We've had discussions on it. It just hasn't made it back. Yeah, we just need to take a vote on it to see where we stand and whether it needs to come before council. Um, and then I also would like to have a discussion based on animals, based on lot sizes for similar situations to what we had happen today or this evening. Um, I would like for us to have a discussion on whether, you know, these lots that are five-acre residential lots, whether there's any leniency there with possibly increase in the amount. And I'm not saying to allow all the animals or pig farms, but obviously the residents that were here and the, the resident that was here that was complaining about having to go through rezoning, I think that there can be a solution there within our ordinance.
Ms. Love?
Um, so as long as we're gonna have a, um, a, um, resolution at our, maybe at our September meeting, I'd like to add something to that. Sheriff Tolson and Kevin Brackett and a couple of state house members and I have been working on some animal welfare issues that we feel like needs to be changed at the local level. Um, and we can't do that without the state, with that, without that being approved by the state and actually initiated. Um, Kevin Brackett is able to help us, help us with that. Um, and, and part of that process is that, um, if, if animals, if dogs are seized, um, for any reason, whether it's a breeding situation or a fighting situation, what happens at this point is that those animals, um, are often held, well, they're held for the whole time that that is in court. It can be a year or more. And, and so the ultimate, um, problem with that is that our animal control facility is full of animals for a very long period of time. So we took a tour of, um, animal control on a day when, um, there had been over eighty animals that had been, um, seized from a, a breeding situation in Lake Wiley and it was horrendous. And, um, these were all very small dogs. And it, it's kind of, you know, heartbreaking to see the, what animal control called the nursery, because that was the room where three or four little mama dogs had had their puppies since they had been taken. And so they were in little crates and things. So I think this would be something that would be worthy of our, um, consideration. And, um, maybe even Kevin Brackett would come and tell us, um, exactly what he needs from us to, to push that forward at the, at the state. We've been, we've been working on it for, we've been working on it for some time. And, um, it just, it would really be a huge relief to, um, our infrastructure of animal control if we could get that done.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion for executive session?
Assistant Concerns.
I don't think we have any.
Do we have any?
Don't shoot the messenger. There are eight reasons to go into executive session. Whether we go into executive session, um, regarding a personnel matter relating to a commercial appraiser, um, another contractual matter for the consideration of a cog operating agreement and a resolution in support thereof, also for the receipt of legal advice relating to a contractual matter regarding the retention of Kristen Small from Nexon Pruitt, also for the receipt of legal advice relating to a contractual matter regarding the retention of Merrill Smith at Smith from Smith and Robinson, also for the receipt of legal advice regarding a request to authorize condemnation regarding project number one-seven-two-two-eight-dash-one-two, tract four, SC one-sixty-one, US twenty-one slash S fifty. And also for the receipt of legal advice regarding a request to authorize condemnation regarding project number one-one-one-four-nine-dash-zero-zero-four, tract fifty-five, US Route twenty-one, SC Route fifty-one. Also for the receipt of legal advice relating to blue granite and also for the receipt of legal advice regarding another contractual matter relating to municipal inmate jail agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will move into executive session in five minutes. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We do. Our first motion is to authorize our county attorney to retain outside counsel as we discuss an executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Our other motion is to authorize condemnation regarding project number one-seven-two-two-eight-one-two, tract four, SC one-sixty-one, US twenty-one, S fifty.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion passes.
Our third motion is to authorize condemnation regarding project number one-one-one-four-nine-dash-zero-zero-four, tract fifty-five, US Route twenty-one, SC Route fifty-one.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion passes.
Our last motion is to authorize staff to offer amount discussed in executive session in regards to the commercial appraiser position.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.